This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, all right. We are now being recorded. So we'll call the meeting to order. And the first order of business is public comments. Are there any public comments? Any public comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to the next order of business, which is approval of the meeting minutes for the June 10th, the regular meeting. And those should have been in your packet of material. So could I have a motion to approve the the meeting minutes from June 10?
But John, I don't actually think that we've distributed the meeting minutes. I don't think we've finished editing them. I think they just sort of got circulated on our end. So we'll
Well, then we'll skip that then.
We can skip that and we'll we'll make sure that this gets circulated to this group and approved at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, then that brings us to you, Eric, right? For and targets and recommendations to the board, right?
Thanks. So I'm just going to recap what we've done so far. This budget planning season, where we are, and then I'll go through the rest of what's outstanding and then kind of walk us through an entire picture year on year, and then we'll get to the recommendations and then so initially, we set out at our first, you know, meeting mid, mid-May. We went through the proposed targets. We talked about the present operating environment with COVID-19 and the economy. And how those are both presenting challenges. We went through our revenue projections, which were adjusted for that economic reality. And then we also talked about the fact that our leases are expiring, what we've done for our office search. Being that we were well aware that leases were up and had where we were. I think at that point, we presented four options that we were actively considering in both Stanford and to replace Rocky Hill. Then the previous meeting, which normally we only have two B and O meetings prior to making the recommendation to the board. We had our second meeting last week. We went through our staffing plan and two thirds of the expenses, those for the general organization and those for the incentive programs. We also caught up on the office space and talked through the two options that we were we intended to bring to you for a recommendation today. The one being 700 Canal Street in Stanford and the other being the Atlantic Works at 7585 Charter Oak Avenue in Hartford. And then today, we're going to go through the rest of the expenses, those for the financing programs. We're going to talk about the investments and capital resources needed. Then going to kind of walk through the overall consolidated budget before coming to the recommendation. And then we'll talk about office space and that recommendation there. Any questions? So I'll start off with talking about expenses. So previously, we walked through the expenses for the incentives budget and those for the general operations. We're today going to be talking about those for the financing programs, which you can see here in the year on year changes. There the interesting thing here is there isn't really any huge thing that I want to highlight, the big difference year on year. We're continuing to do more of the same. Our targets here are really driven based of what's in the pipeline and what we're seeing coming from the market. We're continuing with our PPA offerings. There's and we have the initial round of state projects that are hopefully going to close shortly. We have an additional round that we're planning on for next year. We have the municipal projects that have been generated through our municipal assistance program. And our activity is really focused around continuing the PPA and those, expanding CPACE and then really revisiting and rebuilding the pipeline in terms of multifamily that our present state with just A due to the economy and B due to where things were in general with the pipeline. We have a lot of work to do to rebuild those. Those are a big lift in general. So you'll see the year on year difference in budget in terms of overall OpEx is $57,000. I'm sorry. Eight hundred and thirty.
Eight thirty-seven.
And the big difference is additional expenses associated with these programs that I just mentioned, majority being continued support for the white glove service we provide through our municipal assistance program and assistance with those state projects. And there are additional headcount expenses that is the other big contributing factor here, and those are covered under the staffing plan we previously mentioned. That's what I wanted to highlight here.
Eric, the the multifamily stuff. Does inclusive prosperity, some of that stuff also, or is there's part of this actually subcontract out to them or what's the inter interconnection between this multifamily stuff and inclusive prosperity?
So we do subcontract out to inclusive prosperity. They are managing the program on our behalf. Their fees are not what is driving this increase. They're not, and it's not really even an increase in multifamily. This is just the the fixed costs of running that program. The making sure that we're at the right forums and talking to the right people and plugged in to the right communities. And that as deals come through and things come through the door, we have our third party vendors who we rely on to help us suss out those opportunities and determine which are things that we should pass on and which are going to add the impact that we were seeking to make.
Okay, but it's not the case that like we have inclusive prosperity, but then we're also running other multifamily programs apart from them.
Inclusive prosperity, no, inclusive prosperity runs the programs for us and then we have other vendors.
All right, thanks.
Questions and concerns? Okay. So I want to get to the investments. The overall, the organization's investments for next year. We're we're looking to do to get cash out the door and continue to build a portfolio and continue deployment. So you'll see here, we're intending to continue to disperse money with regard to the line recapitalization. We had dispersed some of this money. It's a revolving line of credit that we have. They've actually returned some of the capital and I think that we're readvancing that in this plan. It's not a new investment. This is already board approved. You'll see the CPACE portfolio and an additional $3 million dispersment to third party lending or to Greenworks. This is the RFT for CPACE Capital that we issued earlier this year. And there's already been a $2 million draw on that line. We are expecting to invest 700 or 7.5 million in PPAs that are developed by third parties, and that's where we're lending to I'm sorry, 2.5 million. I'm reading the wrong column. 2.5 million to third party developers, and this is along the lines of Solar Map. So these are for the municipal projects as well as just third party developed projects. In addition, we're looking at doing two and a half million to I'm sorry, two and a half million to third party developed projects and 10 million to state solar and to the municipal project. And then we're going to continue the SBA program, our regular purchases and providing capital to to this. We're looking to expand that with amalgamated into the Business Energy Advantage Program, which is similar to SBA in all terms except loan size and customer size. Therefore, this is it's fairly, we recognize this as being very safe for us. Amalgamated is pretty comfortable with it. We're continuing to work with them to finalize this with EverSource. But it's a great opportunity for us to provide rate pairs, a more economic solution that continues a good program. We're also looking at putting one and a half million dollars out there for debt financing into a PPA fund that IPC is looking to launch. This would be a new investment in support of the goals for the year. We would be deploying three quarters of a million dollars in anaerobic digester at Fort Hill. This is already board approved. And something we already have money in, and this is just the rest of our commitment. We have $2 million for the Groton Fuel Cell, which is an existing investment and an additional $5 million based off of various opportunities that I know Burt has been working on, including some other fuel cell projects and a couple of EV things. And then we have our loan losses, which is just the calculation of what we're required to put put aside based off of program guidelines and accounting guidelines for due to the loans that we're doing. Questions or concerns? All right. So now I'm just going to recap everything and just go through the budget as a whole now that I've I feel like I've at least given you at some point through this process, each of the each of the puzzle pieces. So kind of to recap, our, these are our targets for FY '21. Financing programs, we're presenting ranges, first of all, due to the uncertainty in the market. And you'll see overall, the financing programs, we're intending to do more for the year than we had for about three quarters, but I think overall it'll be a little bit less than what we had accomplished this year or about equal by the time the year is done. You can see program by program where we're intending to deploy or are attempting to deploy clean energy in terms of CPACE. We're aiming for about the same, if not an increase. The PPA will be an increase. We have, we've been building pipeline. And there's a bunch of stuff that is due to close this quarter that's not in that as of March 31st number. SBA and BEA, as I mentioned, we're expanding into BEA. We're going to continue along those lines. There's a large backlog of loans for us to purchase for BEA, which is going to allow us to hit that 1,200 number. I think we're pretty confident that we'll hit that for the year.
Eric.
Yes, John?
Yeah, I want to ask you, on the Green Bank Solar PPA, the it is like a $20 million swing between the min and the max. It's one of the wider gaps between min and the max. So why is that?
If if we're able to get the second round of state projects through. That's that's the big driver in there. I think that's about 18. I think it's I want to say that that'll lend about 17 million, $18 million worth of project.
So there's like, you know, between the two columns, at least the first bunch, it's about a $35 million difference between the min and the max. And 20 million of it is is just on that, and that depends on on the state projects, right?
Correct. And the majority of the rest of that is on CPACE.
Ah, all right. Right. Okay, I see that.
Eric?
Eric? Yep.
This is, yes, this is Burt. This is Burt. Just a further clarification on that point. This is simply talking about those numbers are referring to the transactions that we're looking to close for the the state projects or state plus other commercial transactions as well. And these are
That that's state, muni and other all PPAs that were
And when you say capital deployed, we're talking about the project value.
Right. So that's the fair for, right, that's not our money. That's the fair market value of the PPAs.
Right. Good. Okay, just just confirming. Thank you.
Thank you, Bert. So moving on to the to Smart E on here, you'll see we have a fairly wide range. And this is just due to uncertainty in the market that we had a pretty we strong showing the first three quarters of the year, we were ahead of targets for Smart E. It, we, this is all has to do with how comfortable people are with letting contractors in their homes to do retrofits. We have our special offer that's due to come to market for an interest rate buy down for specific technologies, battery storage, renewable heating and cooling. Later this year, hopefully that will help us get back on track and could even produce towards the higher end of these targets. So we're we're hopeful for that. And I do believe that there's a case where that could easily happen. In terms of multi position, that's just based off of the ARCEP target where we're seeing percentages, where we're seeing current performance. Obviously, that slowed a bit. As I said, ARCEP, but things have reportedly over the past couple of weeks really picked back up to the pace that they were almost pre-COVID. So that's promising. In terms of multifamily, as I mentioned, our present pipeline has really been battered. It's a hard sector anyway. And the current state of the economy is not really helping. The strategic investments are what I mentioned previously for what Burt has up his sleeve in terms of EVs, fuel cells, community solar. So moving on to the incentive program, we have the ARCEP, which in the worst case scenario is going to just pedal along. I don't think that we're going to see the worst case scenario. I think that we'll see probably close to the best case scenario, hopefully based off of what we've seen the past couple of weeks, where we achieve that statutorily mandated target of 350 megawatts, which would use that 40 megawatts for this year relatively quickly. And we start working on closing out the program by the end of well, by the end of the year, we'll start working on closing out the program and winding it down. You'll see the battery storage. I do have that on there as EEP. I should update that and I will before the board as we're not planning on going through the EEP, but just through another program. You'll see that's our pilot battery storage, if that's approved by PURA. And then overall for the organization, we're proposing somewhere between 4,700 and 6,900 projects. Somewhere between 138 and $227 million of capital deployed and installed capacity between 36.9 and 60.1 megawatts. Questions?
And this is John. I'm wondering if it, do, do we normally have like that wide a swing between our min and our max? It's like a 2,000 project differential and almost 100 million dollars. I mean, it's, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. I'm just curious as to whether this is typical or not so typical. And what, and I would expect in this economic environment, there must be a lot of different scenarios that one could imagine.
So Eric, Eric, let me take, let me take the question and then you you help me out here. So I believe, John, the minimum residential projects gets us to the 350 megawatt target per the statute by the end of the year. And the maximum target is what we assumed if the ARCEP was increased by another 100 megawatts and the pace was still slow getting through that point. So just in terms of where we are on that. So you might recall back in April, the board, we had a conversation with the board on proposing an extension to the ARCEP as a way of restoring the orderly development of the local solar industry. So we, working with DEEP and PURA, went back to revise some of the policy language. We've had a subsequent conversation with the governor's office on the policy language. We followed up. The teams did a great job making sure that all the policy goals were still being held, meaning the increase in the ARCEP line of 100 megawatts was designed to help the industry stand back up, given the impacts of COVID-19, while also ensuring that the transition from net metering to the tariff is withheld. So those were kind of the the objectives we were after. So the teams at DEEP, PURA and the Green Bank did a great job of revising all that to the satisfaction of the governor's office. Now we're having, we're opening up a conversation with the legislative leaders on the ENT committee about that. There's no telling whether or not they're going to have a summer session and whether or not they're going to take up committee recommendations. But we wanted to put in the hands of the leadership of energy and technology, our proposed recommendations to support the industry. So what you're seeing there is a reflection of that. That's why the range is so big.
Right. So there's many different contingencies that you have to factor in in case they go or in case they don't go.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, I will move on to the next slide. So consolidated as an organization, you have this impossible three budget. But overall, the points that I want to go to and highlight on here, I'll do so on the next slide. This is just the overall income statement for the organization. So you'll see year on year differences, revenues. We have a $2.3 million increase. And what I want to highlight in here to everyone is that our standard sources of income, the Clean Energy Fund, the and Reggie receipts, we actually have a $1.1 million decrease and that's due to some of this due to COVID-19. Reggie's technically an increase, but just netted together, it's 1.1 million in decrease, but primarily to COVID-19. That's offset by an additional $1.9 million in increases in revenues due to the Shrek. So we're producing more Shreks, more of them online. That increases. We've an additional $374,000 of PPA income. Most of that is coming from the SCU project. We have $750,000 due to growth of interest from our investments. So we've invested more. We've got more capital out the door. And that's working for us and providing more income for us. And then we have $307,000 in other income in growth and other income, and that's coming from things like Ford capacity markets, fees that we've charged. I think those are the two big drivers in there.
ACP payment.
Yeah, ACP payments, the one that I always forget. In terms of operating expenses, we have in a $1.6 million increase in operating expenses, and this is coming from additional $700,000 of increased personnel expenses. And I'll I'll come, actually, why don't I stop there and we can walk through those. And so year on year of that $709,000. The first set comes from positions that were open this year, but not filled. So we still have vacancies for, they're part of the staffing plan. And I just realized the version of the budget that I have in front of me doesn't have the dollar amount on it, but swap the machine. Thanks. So yeah, that, those, year on year, we didn't spend it, but it was in the budget. So that's only about $2,000 worth of difference year on year in terms of budget. Then we have two positions that we're adding to to new position. That's an additional $255,000. One of which is fully cost recoverable through the Shrek and is wholly necessary for us to keep doing the Shrek. It's our residential asset manager. This position is solely focused on ensuring that the systems in the Shrek are producing optimally. So making sure that system number one is forecast to produce X, that it's actually producing X, that it's been bundled into the Shreks, that it's registered with NEEPool, that we have taken that system and we've monetized it in Ford capacity markets, making sure that all of this happens and happened as efficiently and effectively as possible is the best thing for rate pairs because it means that we're going to cost recover the cost of the program sooner and be able to transfer these wrecks to EverSource in UI. Once we've cost recovered the program. So it's this is an overall like $200 million program and to this person is what's going to keep going with it even after we stop originating new systems and new projects and basically make sure that the wheels are running. There's a lot that we've done in terms of automation and there's a whole lot more that we need to do. We presently have Emphasis and their automation hub from Hartford working with us on looking at the data, looking at process and helping us build a roadmap to a more efficient Shrek engine. It doesn't just help us get new systems in, but helps us manage what we have. The other position I think we talked about previously was a solution for, or a position for Celia, who wanted to step away from the incentive programs, and this is a great opportunity for her and an opportunity for the organization for us to continue to partner. Then we have three additional positions that we're requesting. Then we have three additional positions that we're requesting to add, assuming that are contingent upon battery storage being approved by PURA and us launching that program. If that isn't approved, we will not be adding these three positions. And those are a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars of that difference. The remaining discrepancies are, there's a thirty thousand dollar year on year difference in interns. Most of our interns are actually helping out, clear backlog of paperwork on the Shrek and R CIP program. And then, yeah, that's, that's the big differences in there that I wanted to highlight. Going back in terms of operating expenses, we have a six hundred thousand dollar increase in expenses due to battery storage. And that's just, that's the non-personnel related expense to running the program. That's the E M and V. That's the getting the application set up, all of that. We have two hundred thousand dollars that is what we think that we're going to have to spend in terms of building the Shrek platform. That was what I was just speaking about, that we're having Infosys in to do the initial round of building the roadmap for. Then we have three hundred and thirty two thousand dollars of additional marketing expenses due to the expansion of Solar Map. We also have, we're planning on two bond issuances next year instead of one a year. So we haven't had this year's bond issuance. We haven't had our big push for retail investors yet. That's going to ultimately be incurred in next fiscal year for the first, for Shrek Crunch Three. And then assuming we do Shrek Crunch Four and want to have the retail push, we'll need to market that. So that's going to be a part of that. We also have some CPACE campaigns where we had budgeted for things this year or parts of them, and those are going to actually be done next year. So then we have an additional six hundred and seventy five thousand dollar decrease for next year, which is basically us going from having previously issued an asset backed bond, just going to the municipal market. It's just reflective of us sourcing capital more economically. It's cheaper to raise capital in muni markets than it is in the asset backed market. And the fact that the municipal market is comfortable with the transaction as complex as our Shrek shows the evolution of that market and the more comfort that people are having, are getting with solar. We're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase due to management of S L two systems. That's simply, hey, we have systems in our portfolio. We're going to need to repair them and ensure that they're operating as efficiently and as optimally as possible. We need to roll a truck. We need to replace a component. There's squirrel damage. There's meters need to be replaced, all of that. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of new expenses related to the office move. And then we have two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars of increased depreciation, which is a non-cash expense. This is just accounting. Then we have on incentives and grants, we have one point two million in increase. Incentives that's due to P D I's and the interest rate buy down for Smart E that we're offering. And then in terms of non-operating expenses, we just have a five hundred and five thousand dollar decrease, which is no, huh? Loan loss reserves. It's a, I mean, that's high level how we get from the F Y twenty budget to the F Y twenty one budget. What more, what more can I tell you guys?
And well, I don't know. It's, it's from soup to nuts here. I would hate to have been the person that had to put this all together.
She's looking, she's looking at me right now, glaring.
No, no, you helped a lot too.
So with that, let me move on to the strategic partners. So as you all are aware, we have our strategic partners who are the vendors that we know we're going to spend above seventy five thousand dollars with, or identifying them at this point in our process. And asking you to grant us, or recommend that the board grant us the authority to contract with them. Just due to the size of the P S As that we're intending to sign. Most of these names are familiar. You'll see. There's one that was added onto here, which was an oversight internally that I, that it was left off in the mailing, but I do want to highlight that Strategic Environmental Associates has been added on. They're a new partner this year, or not a new partner this year. We've actually worked with them a lot in the past. They're a more important partner this year, I shall say, because they're helping us with the acquisition for our expanded pilot for alternative fuel vehicle carbon offset, which Matt is leading. But others on here, we have AdNet, who's our I T provider. We have Clean Power Research, who is our present provider for software for the R CIP program. Alter DOMA, C C Cortland, our servicer for CPACE. C S W, who does the concierge service for the state municipal projects for the P P A. We have inclusive prosperity capital. Locust, which runs our solar monitoring platform. Recurve, who does our CPACE E M and V. P R S, our CPACE technical administrator. Bloom Shapiro, our auditor. Guide House, who was formerly known as Navigant, who is our partner on battery storage. Sustainable Connecticut, who I'm sure you're all aware of, has been a great partner on helping us engage municipalities. Go, who's our marketing agency. Adams and Knight, who's our P R agency. S E A, who I mentioned, and then environmental control, AKA NCON, who is servicing our our P P As and making sure that everything is up and running correctly. Questions?
I, I just had a question as to, I know there had been some grumbling in the legislature about subcontractors, the state using contractors. Have we ever gotten any of that static over our use of our consultants or strategic partners?
Did we use them in general or anyone in particular?
I mean, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. There, it seemed as though there was, there was, I don't know, static about the use of contractors by the state.
This is Brian, John. I, we haven't received that directly. You know, we, we also report out all of our contractors through the comptroller. So for example, last year in twenty nineteen, I'll, I'll send a link to the website to you all. Every check that we wrote to R CIP contractors, the banks that we partner with, the consultants that we work with is all disclosed, like publicly disclosed. So, you know, we haven't received, you know, any direct press or pressure on, on the consultants that we've hired. But that's not to say that others haven't. But they're, you know, th- these ones here are really vital in terms of the roles they play within various programs and products.
Oh, I agree. I agree. I, and if we haven't, if we haven't gotten any static, then I don't wish it upon us. I was just curious.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll send around the Open Connecticut stuff. I mean, it's, I think the comptroller's done a great job of bringing more transparency, not only to payroll, you know, what all of our staff, staffs make, but also how we manage and administer our budgets on an annual basis. So yeah, complete, complete transparency. So, you know, will, will with complete transparency, open up questions down the road from others? Perhaps, but you know, everybody should be transparent if you're managing ratepayer and taxpayer resources.
Right.
And, and this is, this is Birch Hunter here. We also have, you know, very strict operating procedures as far as bringing on consultants, you know, with a regular R F P process for, you know, those contracts that are above a certain dollar amount. And there's requirements for signatures for, from the chair of the board for above certain amounts as well. So I think that, you know, in addition to the transparency, we have a process which I think is, is quite robust.
This is Lonnie, and I think that for most of these, you have very good track records with them. You have good experiences, which always helps when the consulting questions start arising.
And so with that, that gets to the resolution and there's one, one change to this resolution, which is that we haven't had an R F P in the last three years. The exceptions, we're adding sustainable energy associates to that. But. So.
So, so we need then to pass a motion to, to affirm this resolution. So do people have, if you haven't read the resolution, take a moment to read through it. And then I would, I, if we could have a motion to approve, that would be good.
This is Eric. I'll move it.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution on the the budget committee's recommendations to the board on the fiscal year twenty twenty one targets and budget. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to, to approve the resolution signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Well, then the ayes have it. Good going.
Thank you. So Brian, do you want to talk about the comp plan?
Great. Yeah, thank you, Eric. Go ahead and go. Perfect. So to accompany the proposed budget and targets and investments for fiscal year twenty twenty one, we also go back to our comprehensive plan and make red line edits to update content based on what was achieved over the year to fix any things that might have been missed before, to add additional looking ahead targets for this coming fiscal year. So you all see that in your packet. So there are a couple of high level changes that are put in there. So the new targets that Eric went through were included in this revised July twenty twenty plan. You know, given the, the challenges that we're facing with COVID nineteen, so the max min, which is the first time we're, we're actually doing this in terms of targets. There are various cleanups along the way, footnotes, links, numerical updates. Some of the links we're going to have to update, you know, as the board takes on proposed bylaw revisions as an example that we'll be talking about next week. So we'll just clean up documents for those online revision. Should the board support them? Program alignment with operations. So we did move the Smart E loan from financing programs to incentive programs. Structurally, from an organism, from an operations perspective, the Smart E loan sits underneath a cellular price underneath incentive programs versus Mackey Dykes and financing programs. And that's because the Smart E loan, you know, as we all know, we, you know, within this budget is all about interest rate buy downs. And it's also about loan loss curves. So it uses our balance sheet. There's nothing that's going to be paid back to the Green Bank really where the financing programs. So we're doing some realignment there, moving some of the language over. And I think, working with Jane and Eric too, we're going to have to shift some of those in, in these budget documents from financing programs to incentive programs. We're also going to include the, the air pollution reductions, the annual air pollution reductions. I think Eric included the, not only the SOX and the NOX, but also the greenhouse gas emission reductions. So we'll be including those, the targets, as well as, you know, including the carbon offset initiative we're speaking about on electric vehicles. We've kind of re-ditioned or added additional language, our battery storage efforts contingent on. Historically, we focused on the Electric Efficiency Partner Program underneath docket eighteen twelve thirty five. Now we're refocusing on the request for proposed designs coming from PURA through the Equitable Modern Grid Docket seventeen twelve oh three. So should that process, competitive process be a decision? Then, as Eric was pointing out, some of the staffing and some of the non-personnel related topics would come into effect. And then lastly, we did include some of the green bond framework language that had the board approved into the comprehensive plan to just bolster our steady progress on, you know, the programmatic certification full of our various bonds. So those are some of the things that you see in the red line document, really kind of updating to where we are and making any corrections or changes.
Brian, this is John. I had a question. Just do we have any idea in terms of the PURA docket, when we may get the, the battery storage issue resolved with them?
So the deadline for the proposal is July thirty first. And, you know, we suspect there's going to be a lot of, a lot of submitters into the process. You know, I think we'll have a general sense of where PURA is heading, you know, whether or not they're moving forward or not with anything within the docket Q four of this calendar year, which would then give us some time to prepare for Q three and Q four of our fiscal which is how we program the budget and the targets. The term, but I can tell you PURA has been on a really rapid timeline on the grid mod docket. And depending upon who submits and the partnerships established and the decisions they make, hopefully we'll know by the end of, you know, the, this first quarter here in the fiscal year.
That would be great.
Yeah, it's totally needed. Where we can really socialize the benefits of, you know, as the R CIP potentially comes to an end at three hundred and fifty megawatts. We've now built a potential, you know, maximum three hundred and fifty megawatt battery that can reduce peak demand. So the big opportunity here for the state to realize more benefits to ratepayers. By the way, tomorrow, John and Lonnie will go through this again. Part of the joint committee presentation where this is the cycle for that joint committee where and the utility administrators of the C L and Mike, you two, where we do updates on where we are in our planning process. in our planning process, the list of feedback. So then tomorrow. That's it, Eric? Or any, any?
Okay.
No resolution here.
So moving on to the office space. So last time I, last time we met, we walked through our proposals for office space that we had identified. I want to talk about some economics today on these. And I want to talk about the, hopefully you'll recommend that the board empower us to enter into leases on these. So the first is 7585 Charter Oak Avenue. It's the Connecticut nonprofit center. We're looking at leasing space in the ground floor there to replace Rocky Hill. It's about, I think we're looking at about $10,000 and change in terms of where footage, we're still officially laying down where, where we want walls and things like that. So that should be finalized shortly. But the space, or the building is between downtown and Colt Park, mini mission aligned and mission adjacent organizations nearby. There's free onsite parking. There's a gym. There's additional meeting space. The building's in the process of getting leased certified and they're interested in doing CPACE for solar and efficiency retrofits. Our space would have 14 offices, a kitchen, five conference rooms and open space for staff, which would be COVID friendly. It's an open concept in terms of a layout with high ceilings. It can accommodate growth, but importantly, in this environment, it it is, as I mentioned, COVID compliant, or we would lay it out to be COVID compliant. So the economics of this is we would, we're looking to lease about 10,000 square feet, which would cost us about $260,000 a year. We are looking to do a 10, 10 and a half year lease. It comes with six months of free rent. The building, as I mentioned, is very interested in green initiatives. This is more economic than our current space, which is, costs us about $270,000 a year. All right, sorry, what? Yeah. In terms of Stanford, we're looking at 700 Canal Street, which is another renovated factory. And we're looking at space in the fifth floor there. We're taking it as his current layout. It's got four offices, a kitchen, a conference room and a large bullpen for staff. Modern insulation, nice views. We currently spend $120,000 a year for 4,000 square feet in Stanford. We're looking at spending about $122,000 a year for 3,600 square feet in Stanford to be slightly closer to the train in space that is much more accepted by our staff than where we currently are. The building owners are very interested in pursuing CPACE for green initiatives. We're looking at entering into a five and a half year lease that comes with six years of free rent spread across the lease. This also comes with free parking, which is a rarity for Stanford.
Eric, we had a resolution on this, but it's not in the that mean that a resolution is not needed?
No, a resolution is, is needed and I apologize for not having that on the slide, but I will pull that up. Bear with me.
No, 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 that's, I just wanted to make sure one way or the other. And where is the board of directors lounge in this?
It's wherever you would like.
Okay. Yeah.
That's the right answer.
We're going to want those water views, just so you know.
It's right next to the bar in my office.
So would, are you comfortable recommending that the board empower staff pursue leases on this bidder in accordance or do not exceed the terms set forth in the memo provided and dated June 12th? Which I believe was the wording of the resolution?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that if the rest of the committee is. Are there any objections to the resolution? As stated?
Not for me.
Would someone move the resolution then and a second?
So moved.
Second, Mike Lee.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second. And if there are any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion recommending the resolution or approving the resolution, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the resolution passes. So that was a bunch of stuff.
We got a lot done in an hour.
Yeah. Well, I know that it took, it took much more than an hour to put all this together. It's been weeks and months really. And I think we can all appreciate the difficulty of trying to plan anything in the current economic circumstances, but you did a great job. So thank you, all of you who worked on that. And if there's nothing else, the motion to adjourn is always in order.
So moved.
Okay, it's, it's moved and approved. The meeting is adjourned. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Take care. All right, bye-bye.